Good evening. We will start with prayer that will be led by Ms. Lamar, I'm sorry, Ms. Monique Lamar-Silvers. Sylvia?
Yes. Good evening. We bow our heads. Lord, most gracious, Lord, we thank you for our coming together this evening. Lord, we asking for peace to be among us, Lord, and as council persons, that we would make the correct decisions in your son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
And the pledge will be led by Councilman Williams.
My pledge is to the freedom of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that everyone please silence their phones so that it doesn't ring. Council persons, please silence all electronic devices. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache is excused. Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have eight members present and one excused.
Thank you. We did it early. I gave you the rules early, so please make sure all the charge devices are turned off so that we don't have any interruptions. Again, Madam Clerk, are there any announcements?
Yeah, no, Mayor, I do not have any this evening, and that will take us then to public input. If you would like to read the rules for public input.
Yes, ma'am. The purpose of the public hearing is for the members of the public to address council as a whole and for the council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific actions being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hea-- well, we're not doing a public hearing, I'm sorry. Okay. Welcome to all of those who have signed up tonight to address council tonight. Hearing from our citizens is very important. We ask that the speakers speak slowly and clear so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, let us know if you will be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers have three minutes, limit time, which is timed by our clerk, so be sure you cover your main points within that three minutes. We ask that you present to the-- you be presented and be courteous and respectful to the members of the public and to the council, to watch on SGTV and to the council, so we will give serious considerations for your concerns. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker this evening is John Millen.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, Mr. Morales and staff, John Millen, 508 West Remington. I first want to thank the mayor and the council for my appointment to the Citizens Police Advisory Commission. We recently held our first meeting, and I was elected to be the vice chair. However, I'm not speaking in an official capacity tonight, but I will relate some activities from that commission. At our first meeting, one of the things that happened was Police Chief Ruth invited all the members of the commission to do a ride-along with the police officers, and I took mine a little less than two weeks ago, and I wanted to talk about that a little bit and how it relates to our recently released crime statistics for the first half of the year. Those statistics showed a drop of approximately 3% in our major crimes, and that's all to the good, but I wanted to point out a little bit about what that really means when you see it from the street level. That 3% represents lives not lost, families not devastated, and neighborhoods not scarred by that type of criminal activity. In the ride-along that I took, you saw what happened when we were not successful in our efforts to reduce crime in the city, and I want to mention the professionalism and the compassion of our officers when they deal with the public. I've heard it said on a TV show, I think, sometimes when you're dealing in those situations, you're talking to somebody on the worst day of their life, and that can actually be true. Our officers work in a very different environment than even just a few years ago or a year ago, and that's part of the constant training they get, that they are always up to date in how they deal with the public. When a bad situation occurs, it's also new to them. They're meeting new people in tough situations, and I wanted to mention in particular that in the calls that were taken by the officer I rode with, between 75 and 80% of those calls involved some type of consequence to substance abuse. The substances ranged widely, and in almost none of them was it a good outcome, so I think that's one of the areas that they've worked the hardest at to keep from happening. The last thing I wanted to mention to this council and other commission members I serve with, schedule a ride-along if you haven't, and if it's been a while since you have for council members, I know some of you haven't had the opportunity yet, please take advantage of Chief Ruth's invitation to do so.
Our second speaker is Debbie Melkonian.
It's good to be back, really. It's great to be here in council chambers in front of you and speaking directly to you. I appreciate this opportunity. I'm going to talk about Wicks Park and the Wicks Park Trail, or that street that goes down by Wicks Park. The Wicks Park Drive extension was constructed in the 70s and provided a centrally northerly connection to Wicks Park from Fortney Street to Rust Avenue. The project reclaimed industrial properties along the river and was as much about reclamation as it was about recreation. If memory serves me right, state recreation grants contributed significant funding necessary to purchase and develop these extensions. The intent of this project was to provide vehi-- I practiced this word, vehicular and pedestrian access to the boat launch and recreation facilities in Wicks Park that included the playground, picnic areas, restrooms, as well as softball diamonds, were later converted into soccer fields. It is my understanding that a decision has not been made, if I'm correct, whether or not the Iron Bell Trail extension will go through and Wicks Park Drive will be closed. I hope this doesn't happen for several reasons. A group of individuals just bought the center, Neighborhood House, and they call it, let's see, they call it, not the--
The NAIB.
Yeah, yeah. They got a grant from Saginaw Community Foundation, and they purchased the building, and it's going to be the NAIB, and traffic along that road will also be really, really important. We've also had a very successful group from the Seeds Program under the direction of Larry and his team, and they're funded through the Seeds, which is in Traverse City. If you haven't had a chance to drive through Wicks Park, take a minute and do it. Mayor Moore did it on Friday, and she was astounded by how much they've accomplished, how much they've cleaned up, how different it looks. You can see the river, nothing, you know, you're safe, you can see people, and it's outstanding. I urge you to consider not closing Wicks Park Drive and open this up to the public for their comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Audrey Beatty. Audrey, are you here? Do not see her, actually. John Pugh.
Madam Mayor, the council manager, good evening. My issue is one that I really, really am not excited to be here for tonight. On the other hand, I realize that we have a city right now that have a lot of opportunities, but we also have a city that could really slide into crisis depending on how we deal with some of it. And I look, and I, sometime I talk to some of the federal people, and I have to say that we can't blame our president, we can't blame our federal officials with some of our local problems now. Our federal officials have done a fantastic job. They worked hard, and I was talking to Representative Kildee. I mean, he has flown back and forth to Washington, and he has to be a little tired, and I see where he's going to set up some meetings that he will be in Flint, Saginaw Bay City, and he should be coming into Saginaw taking his victory leaps, laughs, his victory laughs, and I'm serious, but we have put him in a position where when he come here, he can't get, he can't get his pats on the back, because what they're saying is, is no need for Saginaw to have a water shut-off problem, and that's just one of my back bottom line. I know sometime we can get into, look, and I know a lot of, most of you up there, I love most of you up there, and I will say that this is the makeup of what could be a very, very historic council and one that can make historical things happen, but turning off water is going to get in the way of a lot of the opportunities that you have to do right now, and when the federal money coming in, look, this is generational money. This is money that a council won't have an opportunity to do in a long time. You'll be the last council that will have chance to take some low and moderate income people and change their lives, end their family lives, and bottom line, we can't let the water turn-off situation get in our way. We got to do a moratorium on turning off this water, and the moratorium can't be to July 15th, it can't be to August, September, it's got to be longer period than that, almost indefinite, at least the end of the year. We won't be the only one to do that. There are people that really having a lot of compassion to our people. We might find one or two out there that may slip through the track that maybe should have had, but there's a whole bunch of them out there that need it. I've talked to people, this weekend wasn't good for me. I talked to people that really, really was trying to get past this, getting up this morning. So bottom line, let's just get rid of this water situation.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Naisha Clark Young.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and manager. I'm here because of the water situation. I'm here because we need a permanent moratorium. The median income in Saginaw for 2019 was under $30,000. Now we are in the midst of a pandemic. I do not believe it is in good governance to turn off water in the midst of a pandemic. Not only is your water turned off, but if it's not on, you are fined. Where is the morality in this? As Mr. Pugh said before, we are in historic times. The opportunity that you have before you, no one will ever have. Is this how we want to bring it in? Is this how we want to welcome this? I understand that I'm a citizen, and this is just, this is your job, and you do this all day, and I understand that you don't want to make promises, but I also understand that the funds are coming, specifically federal dollars are coming down just for water. Water infrastructure is happening all over. What side of history do we really want to be on? What legacy do you want to leave to your children and your grandchildren? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alonda Sylvia.
I am here to speak about the closure of Ojiboye Park to vehicular traffic. A few resolutions that I came up with that I hope that you can take into consideration is, instead of closing the park, having a curfew at the park, as many other parks have, require a park pass or a fee to park your car on the, at the park, I'm sorry, and I was wondering about allocating funds for Park Patrol to patrol the area so maybe there's not as many issues going on out there. And another idea was to put a fence around the grassy area so we don't have cars rolling on the grass and that we can still utilize the circle drive for what it was intended for. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Bowles.
Respect to the city council staff. I come today with a heavy heart, but I'm hopeful that in this room, I have some, some people that are willing to listen to not only myself but the public at large. I'm here today to talk about ARPA. As we know, the federal government sent down funds due to the pandemic, let's be clear about that, due to the pandemic, the federal government sent funds down to cities like ours to address concerns that were put in place by the pandemic. A lot of people lost their lives, a lot of people lost jobs, a lot of people's lost income, and that money is, has been sent down for that very purpose, those purposes, and more. My question to the council is, why are we waiting on having the conversation? Why are we waiting? There's no, there's no reason to wait on this conversation. Other cities have already gotten into their process, well into their process. Other cities have created ARPA commissions and boards to specifically address ARPA. There's no tangible reason you can give as to the reason why we're waiting until the fall. Get to the conversation, stop being afraid of it. It's not nothing to be afraid of. This is something that can transform this city. Read the room. We're in a city that's basically low income. You got a lot of people that are hurting out here right now, but for you to wait to disperse those funds or even talk about dispersing those funds is horribly, horribly tone deaf. Please do the right thing and get to this conversation. Our people need those funds. Our city organizations need those funds. Places like First Ward, Neighborhood House, and others, CAC, we need those funds because we can change our city now, and I, please, I urge you, I've talked to you guys on an individual basis for months about this, so now I'm in your chamber asking very clearly to please start the ARPA conversation. You don't have to make promises to start the conversation. Matter of fact, you don't even have to say anything. Your job is to listen to the public, take their ideas, put them in a file, do whatever you need to do, so that when the time comes to actually disperse the funds, you'll know what the public wants, because that's the public's money, it's not yours, it's the public's money. So I'll end there. Please start the ARPA conversation immediately. We need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Joseph Mendez.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Mendez. I am the CEO and founder of Getting Boxing Gym. We're a gym that opened up just recently in Saginaw, say about a year ago. Within that time, we've had great success in bringing in youth of the city. We have over 60 members now. Now, those 60 members aren't all youth, but it's all, they're all part of the community. We have people ranging from 50 years old to six years old. Most of our 60 members, most of the people who are in our gym, are between the ages of 12 and 25. I'm here because we have started a program that has boomed over the last year, and we have been very good at what we do. The programming that we have is just boxing, whether it's for competing or for fitness. We've had six members of our community, of our boxing gym, that went over to the state finals as champion of the East Side State, four, six going over as champion, two going over as runner-up, and that goes to show, not that we are good at teaching boxing, but these kids, these youth are committed to coming to this gym. They are committed to making and devoting their time to something, and I think that's great, because after the pandemic that we have just had, kids are looking for something to do, looking for something to go after, looking for a goal to chase. The only thing that we are struggling with and is providing more programming. We want to provide better programming, not just boxing as fitness, not just boxing competition, but programming as a whole to help the youth with what they struggle with, to be more professional, to teach them the skills that it takes to speak into a council like this, to go to the interviews, how to fill out applications. I think there's a large gap in our community when it comes to what the schools are teaching, what the parents are teaching, and what's not being taught. There is a large gap of personal skills, life skills, that need to be taught, so why I'm up here standing is because I would like to invite everyone on the council, anyone interested, to have a meeting, sit down with us, invite, we can go out to lunch, but let's discuss what we can do to provide these services, who can help us, you know, sit down and, who can provide music for these kids? Who can teach them how to play an instrument? We're bringing them in with their passion, and that's why they're committed, because they like to box, or we've taught them how to love boxing. But what about the ones that do not love boxing? I think we need to reach out to all the youth, to all, to all the, all the, all ages of community with their passions. People like music, people like cooking food, people need the life skills that is not being taught in schools anymore, and maybe our parents, their parents, the members of their family no longer know how to teach them, and that's what we want to provide. Not college-level courses, we're not looking at that, just simple life skills. So I invite you all to get in touch with me. We have a website, Getting Boxing Gym, we're on Facebook, I have a Facebook, Joe Mendez, I invite you all to come, I invite you all to lunch, and let's discuss what we can do to help better our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Council persons, you have to be reminded that you have a three-minute limit. Please get all of your points in within that three minutes as well. We will begin tonight. If I mix it up, please forgive me. I got one paper and I gotta look down. We'll start tonight with Ms. Lamar Sylvia.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that has public input, believe me, listened to your statements, what you've had to say. I too am concerned on certain issues. I also met Mr. Joseph, and people might know that I'm pro-youth, so anything that has to do with youth and is going to better our youth in the city of Saginaw, I'm on board. I talked with him lengthy in regards to that, and you, some of you all may know, I have a nephew that is pro, so that's all I have to say, because I want to give time to the other council persons, but again, thank you each and every one for your public input.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to everyone. First, would like to say that thank you to our speakers tonight. I appreciate you all coming out, and I would like to take this opportunity to say as a retired city employee that I commend our city staff on the work that they're doing, and I say that because there's a lot of things we, as the public, as citizens and civilians, that we do not understand procedurally and that goes on behind the scenes, and we as council members, this is not our all-day job. City staff, that's their job. They work, they do the work. We simply come here and what we're supposed to do is checks and balances, that, that's it. But we do, it's not to belittle anything that we're here to do, but it's, we need to understand that our staff is doing the best that they can with the resources that they have, and I think they're doing an outstanding job, and that's why I'm a citizen of the city of Saginaw, because I have pride living here, and I'm proud of the work that we have done, and we, I mean as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Bench.
Thank you and good evening. It is definitely nice to be back here in council chambers, but to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Williams said, our staff works very, very hard and makes difficult recommendations often, and they have demonstrated over the 10 years I've been here that they should be trusted when they make recommendations, even the difficult ones, simply because when I ran, Detroit was in bankruptcy, and Flint was under an EFM, and we know how that went for them, and I had many people telling me that that was going to be the situation, it was just a matter of time till Saginaw followed suit, and the very people that you look around at this, in this room, who are here on staff, were there 10 years ago, and they're still here today, and they are the reason why we never filed for bankruptcy, they are the reason why we have a savings account of surplus, or not a surplus, but a fund balance that has been built up over that 10 years. They're the reason why we have clean water to drink, why we will never face a crisis like Flint has. They are the reason why we have survived. Things are not perfect, things are not great all the time, but our staff has done a phenomenal job. They've also worked face-to-face in person throughout the pandemic, and they've navigated this pandemic. We've been able to sit at home in the safety of our rooms and our living rooms, but they've been here every single day carrying out the tasks on a day-to-day basis, and they deserve credit for that, they don't deserve flack for that, they deserve praise for that. We point to these other cities and say, look what they're doing, do what they're doing, do what they're doing. Those cities should be pointing to Saginaw. We have a phenomenal staff, and I trust them, and I will continue to trust them, and because I trust them, because one of the many reasons why I trust them is because when I approached them, a few of us approached them about having a utility assistance collaborative event, we held a three-day event here where pretty much every department at some point came down and volunteered. You had almost every single council member that was available there. You also had our community partners with the CAC and the United Way and the First Ward Center, and that's something unique to Saginaw. I had some nasty woman tell me that this will never happen in the township, and the township would never do that for them. You're right, they don't care as much as we do. So this notion that we don't care, or that we don't go to bed with heavy hearts, or we don't, these things don't weigh on us, is unfair, and it's incredibly unfair to the staff that has committed themselves. is, is unfair, and it's incredibly unfair to the staff that has committed themselves. A career, a life, you know, that they've given of service to our community and to, to, to the city. And, you know, the council gets to take credit for some of that stuff sometimes. Um, but really, they're the ones who deserve the praise for that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I too wanna say it's very good to be back, although we have some addition accessories that some of us wear. But you just coordinate. Um, I want, I wanna thank our public, hey, it's true. I wanna thank our, and also some of our, all of us have relationships with people in the audience. So again, it's great to see everybody. Um, I do wanna thank our public speakers as well. Um, we truly appreciate hearing from our constituents. Um, and we're up here because of you. So I hope you guys keep coming back, sharing your, um, stories, sharing your opinions. It does not go unheard, so thank you. I also wanna thank the Fireworks Festival Committee for a phenomenal Fourth of July fireworks festival. If you were watching, you share my sentiments. And, um, I was right in downtown, so it was an awesome fireworks festival, and it was great to have them back this year. I also wanna congratulate, congratulate our new fire chief, Chief Rains. Thank you, uh, for your service to the community. And welcome to the ranks of chief. Um, I also wanna congratulate Officer Allison Avery, is that correct? She is our July Officer of the Month. So thank you to her for all that she is doing. Uh, reminder that July twenty-second is the next front porch roll call. So if you have not been to one yet this summer, um, make sure you do. The next one is at twenty-eight, twenty-four Perkins. Everyone is welcome, so please come out. Uh, and then I wanna remind everyone, um, and thank the Saginaw Public School District for the Meet Up Eat Up, I think it's called Meet Up and Eat Up Program. Um, it's a summer feeding program, so if you know children that are, are in need of food or need something to eat or a snack, please, um, connect with Saginaw Public Schools on their social media, and anyone on the school board, or anyone connected with the schools, they will share the exact location. I know there's one at Thompson for sure. Um, and then lastly, uh, I too wanna share my thanks to the city staff and all of our community organizations who stepped up and helped, uh, connect residents with funding if they are in need of funding for their water. I know it's been hard for everybody. So, um, and I know there's money still available. So if you know somebody who still needs some help, please, please refer them. Um, and I know a lot of people's applications are being reviewed still, so, um, it is a thankless job sometimes, but definitely have the full faith of our city manager and our departments for what you're doing. And I know we will come to a peaceful resolution or find solutions for everyone. Um, it may not fit everybody's needs, but we will make sure, and I know that the city will do the best to make sure there's a resolution fast and swiftly, so thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next we have Councilman Flores.
Uh, good evening, Saginaw. Is this working? Oh man, I didn't know it was, uh, uh, you can move it. Well, thank you so much for all coming out tonight, it's, uh, great to see everybody. Um, I hope everybody feels safe during this pandemic. Um, for those that have been vaccinated, thank you so much for keeping our community safe. Real quick, there have been two lives that have been lost again, uh, young folks, twenty-three years old, uh, that have passed away due to gun violence, uh, they've been murdered. And so if anybody has any information on Nadia Wallace or, uh, Daquarius Morales' killing, please call nine-eight-nine, uh, seven-five-nine-one-two-eight-nine. Or Crime Stoppers at one-eight-hundred-four-two-two-five-two-four-five. Uh, I am incredibly sad every time a young person gets killed in this city because it's our most, most precious resource that, uh, we'll never get back. I think the, the city staff is doing a great job, I commend them. I think that we have a lot of, um, work ahead of us, especially with this ARPA money. Recently, I had called for additional council meetings to have happen, but that's something that we need to vote on in a couple of years, so let's do that. With Gideon Boxing, I would love to sit down with you. I don't know how to throw a punch, so if you could teach me that, that would be great. Cause I got a couple of people I'm fighting against right now. But nonetheless, uh, you know, we are Saginaw, right? We do have a commonality that we live in this city, we love this city. Uh, we do want things to be better. We see a full opportunity with this ARPA money to correct things that, you know, people may feel have been neglected along the way. And I, I believe earnestly that all, myself and my colleagues, wanna use that opportunity to, uh, help everybody that we usually wouldn't be able to help, uh, given budget restraints. It's gonna take a lot of public participation. It's gonna take a lot of folks coming continuously to these meetings. Uh, it's been odd, kinda sitting at home and being on the computer and not really understanding the level of public participation that's going on behind the scenes. But it's great to see all of you. So, uh, thank you so much for coming, and I hope to, uh, talk with you after the meeting. Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Um, it is a pleasure being back in the center. This is my second time since being elected, sitting in a chair like this. Um, so I'm happy to be here with everyone. Um, I really wanna say thank you to our public speakers, um, who came out. Um, these past couple of weeks have been a very interesting time for me. I can only speak for me as a councilmember and the, uh, the value shifts that I have experienced. Seeing the city staff work together with the community. Um, one of the things that I'm realizing is that there is work that still must be done. We have another generation of young people who are in dire need. And so me being the newcomer, I don't have the relationships that everyone else has. And so because of that, I'm looking to build those relationships, but I can't neglect the community voice that I've heard during this time. So my prayer and my hope, I told councilmembers earlier, I've been praying all day. My prayer and my hope is that we put our defenses down and we have an honest conversation of the pain that we have experienced in these past years, this past year. And not just this past year, but we can't overlook the history of our city. And because of that, it's gonna have to come down to us putting daggers, putting all that stuff down and being honest. Having clear communication, clear information, so that when we leave the table, we are all on the same page. Because the only way to see a greater Saginaw is if we all come together, city, city council, public, if we all come together, not with our own agendas, but with the success of this great city. Because the city of Saginaw has a destiny and there is a plan for this city. And we can only accomplish that when we put our pride aside and work together, love one another, and keep working towards the great accomplishment that we have seen and I believe that are yet to come. This money coming in, I'm excited, I'm excited for when the conversation will come because I know it's gonna be a great meeting of the minds. And we're gonna work tirelessly to make sure that we see the success of this great city. Um, that's all I have for that, but I, before I end, I wanna say congratulations to Ms. Nai, my Nai Asia Hopkins, who won the gold medal in art for the National Axol Competition. This young lady was put on front and center, the show was, I don't know what TV station it was on, but the fact is, her name in Saginaw, Michigan was on that screen. So, so I'm, I'm happy about that, and I wanna acknowledge her for her hard work. I heard that she tried a couple of years and she kept going back. I just think that's the story of Saginaw. You will never get rid of Saginaw, we're gonna continue to work and work and work because success is our destiny and we're on our way to it. I truly believe it with the help of the Lord. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next we have Mayor Protem Ball.
Good evening, fellow citizens. I'd like to thank you all for coming out and making your comments made today. And, uh, let you know that your voices will be heard and there will be some action taken behind that. You know, sometimes, uh, this pandemic and situation like the water situation, it has a tendency to bring us together and we find solutions. Uh, the city didn't do anything wrong by cutting people's water off if they didn't pay their bills. But we had, uh, maybe sixty or seventy people who had not paid their bills. But we did have a solution that came out of that. Uh, some citizens said they didn't like it, so therefore we got people together to help those people pay their bills. And, and, uh, the water situation has been cut off. Uh, I wish, and I hope, that we would see, feel the same way about these killings that are going on in our community. I would wish that people would mentor our youth so that they don't think that violence is the best way out. I wish that people that came here today would even go out and, 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 uh, talk to our young youth to let them know that they don't have to kill each other. They, there's a lot of opportunities for our youth today, that they can get involved in some things that's positive. But they don't know the way, somebody got to lead them. And I think the people here today are the same people that can go out there and lead our youth to productive and make them productive members of society. You know, my heart goes out when the other councilman is talking about somebody got killed. Uh, it just hurts me so bad, man, when these youths are out here killing each other over nonsense. As little as Saginaw is, I have kids in my car and they, and I'll take them to the south side, to a church. And they telling me, "Don't stop at this corner, don't stop at that corner, don't go to this gas station." I said, "Well, what's the problem?" They telling me that they can't go to certain gas stations in, in Saginaw because of certain people, uh, consider theyself to own that particular block. And I think that's nonsense. And these kids is in school with me, and I'm just taking them to the church to get some equipment. And they scared to ride across town. One of those young ladies is, is the young lady that got killed recently over on, uh, by Vets Park. She was one of those people that was scared to go on the south side. So I think we got a lot of different issues that we need to work on in the city of Saginaw. And I guarantee, if you work with the youth, a lot of people won't, won't be having the issues that they have today about worrying about paying the, uh, water bill necessarily because they have productive jobs to help them pay those bills. You know, you won't have maybe, uh, three families living in the household and the grandmother taking care of the grandkids, and the parents out doing something else. You know, so there's a lot of issue that we need to work with. But one thing about Saginaw, we will work together. We gonna continue to work together, and we gonna make sure that all these issues gonna be solved. It don't hurt me when people come up and say things about the city council or, or the city manager or something like that. Those issues don't bother me because I know they gonna be taken care of. So if you got something to say to me, I'd be more than welcome to, uh, take your comments and work with you. So thank you.
Last but not least, I'm gonna echo. I thank all of you public speakers for speaking. I heard you. I heard you. I hear you every time you speak to me. The difference is, speak to me, not at me. And when we can learn how to speak to one another, we can come to a common ground. For the water issue, I was in the meeting, since we always bring up other cities. Uh, management relatives will tell you, I'm all over the country. I was in Flint. They got some money coming down the pipeline, this exclusively for certain stuff. We gonna get on it. We gonna try to get some money for Saginaw so that we can do some things. We have come a long ways. And for those who don't know, this last eight years has been a test. I heard young Copeland say, he was praying, I've been praying since the water shut off. I was praying in January. I was praying that we would stop fighting one another. We can't get anything done when we're fighting. I went out to the park in the rain at Wigs Park. Three young men, don't know each other from Adam to nothing, were out there cleaning up, renovating Wigs Park. I do encourage you to go out there because I was knocked off my feet. A place that I thought was gone is not gone. All because of the seed program and these three young men who are so prideful and they're gentlemen. They walked me, held my arm, didn't want me to fall in the mud. Look, I had to go home and tell my people about that, look, y'all don't open no doors. So when we talk about what we want to do, listen, I hear you, Saginaw, I hear you. Nobody loves Saginaw more than me. Anybody up here can tell you, nobody loves this city more than me. And yes, we've got some challenges, but we can all rise above all of our challenges if we start talking to and not at one another. I'm not gonna take my whole three minutes, I'm just gonna tell you closed minds with, my favorite saying is what? Love. What the world needs now is love, sweet love. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at reports from the city manager.
Don't look at me like that.
Waiting for you to give me the okay, Mayor. I'll start. As Councilwoman Scherzer mentioned, I have appointed, uh, Fire Battalion Chief Thomas Rains to serve as our next fire chief. Uh, Chief Rains officially started his new position on July second. A little bit of his background, Chief Rains began his employment with the City of Saginaw Fire Department in nineteen ninety-four as a firefighter. He was promoted to the rank of Fire Engineer in nineteen ninety-seven, Fire Lieutenant in two thousand and six, Fire Captain in two thousand and eleven, Fire Battalion Chief in two thousand and fourteen, and Acting Fire Chief earlier this year. Chief Rains earned an Associate of Applied Science degree in fire science from Delta College and has served in the United States Post Guard and Coast Guard Reserve. Throughout his fire department career, Rains has received numerous commendations, including two chief special recognition awards, a distinguished service award, four unit citations, and five meritorious service awards. He was selected as the Saginaw Fire Department Firefighter of the Year in two thousand and ten. The city has already greatly benefited from Chief Rains' commitment to the fire service and his enthusiasm for improvements to safety and his dedication to the community made him an excellent candidate for the position. Encourage you all to introduce yourself to Tom if you haven't met him. He is a city resident, and I believe he's been a city resident for more than twenty years, I'm fairly certain, so. He's a proud city resident. Our, our deputy city clerk, Christine Bowlesman, most of you know her as well. She has fulfilled her requirements to earn the Certified Municipal Clerk designation. The Certified Municipal Clerk program is designed to enhance the job performance of the clerk in small and large municipalities. To earn the CMC designation, a municipal clerk must attend extensive, extensive education programs. The CMC designation also requires pertinent experience in a municipality. The program prepares the applicants to meet the challenges of complex role of the municipal clerk by providing them with quality education in partnership with institutions of higher learning as well as state and national associations. The CMC program has been assisting clerks to excel since nineteen seventy. Congratulations to Deputy Clerk Bowlesman and Ms. Scherzer. Also appreciate, as you can see, uh, from both Chief Rains and Deputy Clerk Bowlesman, we do have a lot of employees who are dedicated to improving themselves and serving the city. And that's just two examples. As several councilmembers mentioned, um, the assistance program that, that was last week, um, it did, uh, start with, uh, a discussion with, with Councilwoman Bench. And I really applaud the, um, the mayor and Councilwoman Bench were extensively involved in the planning of that event, as well as, uh, John Stempel and Lori Brown Finance Director. And then, as Councilwoman Bench mentioned, uh, staff from several departments participated. That event was supposed to be, um, I believe it was three or four hours a day. And that event, um, was pretty much the full day for three days. I know there were hundreds of households that were here to receive assistance. Please, councilmembers, if you know people, encourage people to make sure they complete everything that's needed for that so that they can get their, uh, their bills paid by the, um, United Way and the other organizations. There are a few things that, um, some people, uh, do need to complete, so, um, we're going to extend our pause on, on the water shut offs while we give that time to work through. We'll look a few weeks from what we had originally said, uh, like we said we would start again July fifteenth. I don't think that gives enough time to complete that process for a lot of people, so, um, we'll push that off and we'll keep monitoring as it comes through. Uh, but we do, the only thing that we have to guide us as the city staff, our- But we do, the only thing that we have to guide us as the city staff or the ordinances that are provided to us by city council, and the ordinance does advise us that there is no free water service in the city of Saginaw, Section 5235. And 5236 also states that when you sign up for water, you're agreeing to pay it. So that's what we've been following and that's what we have to look to the direction is the ordinances that are provided to us by city council. I think we have the agreement from the council as it is to do these pauses. We did pause initially. The state of Michigan stopped water shut offs for almost a year. That ended April 1st. Many, many cities in Michigan started April 1st with their shut offs. We did not. We waited two and a half months. We did it for a few weeks and it's now stopped again while we work through this process. So there is money available still. Encourage anyone to sign up. The amount of households, just on our rough analysis I received from fiscal services that were in shut off eligibility reduced by 30% in the last few weeks, that's significant and that's not including the people who signed up for assistance last week. I will add, you know, we talk about the ARPA money. A lot of the money that these organizations have is from ARPA. Additionally, the state of Michigan has $5.65 billion in funding from ARPA. Senate Bill 690 previously assisted with those water bills, which maybe a lot of people in the public don't know, that assistance has been provided by the state last year as well, last December. They paid outstanding water invoices for people that were receiving assistance for the state for, I believe, about a six-month period roughly for COVID. So that has been applied to balances already, but we think there may be assistance coming from the state and we'll wait for that. I did see forwarded from our finance director that MISHDA is also looking at additional funding for rent assistance and utility assistance, including water. So as we see these things work through, I think that will give us a direction on how we move forward with that item. So I, I did want to, I know a few council members have, have mentioned this in your comments, and I know Councilman Williams knows a lot of this history from working for the city, but I want to give some of our financial background. So I was appointed by city council as interim city manager in fall of 2013 and city manager in spring of 2014. October 23rd was my first meeting as interim city manager. Councilwoman Bench is the only council member still serving on council that was on council that day. The next meeting, Mayor Moore and Mayor Proton Balls were seated at that council. And I mentioned those dates just to give you reference for the city's financial position and how it's changed since that time. 2013 audit listed a total general fund balance of $268,000, including inventories, which was over $100,000 of that total. With a budget of $35 million, the city's general fund requires almost $96,000 a day to operate. So we had a fund balance of about 0.76% of our general fund. The GFOA recommends a local unit maintain a fund balance of 10 to 20%. In 2020, our most recent audit, the city has an unassigned fund balance of $7.864 million. That's 22% of the $35 million general fund budget, and that's where we should strive to be. Saginaw is considered by the state of Michigan as a financially distressed community. We have limited property tax revenue with no possibility to increase revenue under current charter provisions, yet we've managed to avoid the issues that similarly situated cities have experienced. Saginaw has never had an emergency financial manager, we've never declared bankruptcy. I started as Finance Director for the City of Saginaw in 2009, and we had a lot of cleanup work to do at that time. The 2008 city audit identified 21, and I added this up quickly and I think I missed some of them, but there were 21 significant deficiencies considered to be material weaknesses in our audit. Findings and questioned costs or federal awards and questioned costs. Those have all been cleared up and we turn in a clean audit every year. And we receive government finance officers' awards for our audits and our budgets. And why? It's because we have talented and knowledgeable staff in the city. From fiscal services and office of management budget to all of our departments, city administration and division heads have implemented changes to make Saginaw financially stable, operationally stable, and brought us in compliance with federal programs. We take our time and we make sure we do things the right way, and that's what we'll strive to continue to do. The council and the residents of the city should know that that is our history. Potentially, we would have been bankrupt very easily, I think, very easily, without making hard decisions and, and changes that I know several of you know about. So I, I want to assure council and our residents that we'll continue to operate that way. We, we do take our time, but that's because we want to make sure that we do things right. I've seen, when I started with the city, we had federal grants that didn't have reports done for 16 quarters. We had federal programs that we owed back a million dollars. We don't want to have that happen under our watch again, either myself or I'm sure council members don't want that to happen either, which that's, that's what we're trying to avoid and we want to make sure we comply. We do have a chance to make big changes and I think that's why you, you do take your time, to make sure that you do these things right. And I'll tell you that, that we work with especially our OMB Director, Ylana Jones, and our Finance Director, Lori Brown. They have been working with the Michigan Department of Treasury, the Michigan Municipal League, Michigan State University, and the government finance officers associated to look at these federal programs and how we can benefit and how we can use them. And I'm, I'm confident in their recommendations as well. So with that, that concludes management update.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments for the city manager?
Thank you again.
I didn't say it when we were going around, but I do want to publicly say I thank the staff, the council people, and the citizens of Saginaw for coming out. If you didn't know it, that is, I, I heard people talk about first time history making. That is actually the first time we had services working together with us. We actually networked with Community Action Center and United Way. And if you weren't in the building and if you came in the building, I want to apologize ahead of time because yes, it was chaotic, but everybody was here and everybody was happy. And you had some that were mad, but I do want to thank the staff, the council people, and just tell y'all, that's what it's all about. It's all about smiles. So city manager, I mean, my head goes off to you continuously because whether people know it or not, it don't seem like it. But behind the scenes, you're doing an awful lot of stuff. You always tell me that. But you're doing just as much as I am and every other nine, eight people up here. That's what we get, that's what we get paid for. We don't make a lot of money, but we work like we do. So all I'm saying to you is thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are now at the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on web, on the city's webpage and on SGTV, channel 191. I need a motion with, with leaving room for exceptions to approve, to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Do we have any exceptions?
Yes. 16, 17, and 20.
Can I add exceptions for number 13?
Ms. Sylvia, what was yours again?
16, 17, and 20.
Okay. Mr. Flores?
Uh, number 13.
It's been moved in second with the exceptions of number 13, 16, and 17, and 20. Call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Item number 13, approve a blanket purchase with Aetna Supply Company for $100,000 for fiscal year 2022 and pending budget approval for fiscal year 2023 for replacement water meters, meter reading components for the, for the Maintenance and Service Division. That was Councilmember Flores.
Yeah, city manager, has there been any discussion on being able to more accurately provide an amount that doesn't meet the 1,000, $100,000 blanket purchase and where we can kind of tailor that to being more specific than giving that amount of money?
Phil Carwatt's here to answer your questions.
Yeah, I do my best, but good afternoon. So, so and some of you newer council members to kind of let you, I know you, right now you're seeing a lot of what are called blanket purchase orders, but we do, my department's probably over half the city budget, a third of the city employees, the Public Services Department, we do thousands and thousands and thousands of purchases a year. So what we try to do is set up blanket, they're called blanket purchase orders, that still meet all of the purchasing requirements with Lori Brown and Mary Heiser in purchasing. The problem is, is we know on average this is about how much we spend a year, so it makes it more efficient to spend it when we set a blanket up. And what a lot of this is for is a majority of the meters throughout the city are 5/8 meters, but we got 5/8 up to 10 inch, and we don't like to keep those in inventory and on, on the shelf because if we're not using them, then they can go bad or deteriorate over time, or as new meters come out, we might go to some smart meters and it don't make sense to keep a large inventory capital on hand. So this, and then if some of the meters that break through the year, you have them freeze and crack, a lot of that stuff, if there's damaged meters, a lot of the money we spend come back to the city because we do bill for that. We bill like $170 if a meter gets frozen or cracked at the responsibility of the owner, so. But it's just an efficient way to purchase, and we know that this is a sole source with Aetna. We do check their prices to make their, make sure their prices are legit. So it just keeps us from having to get a quote, enter a rec, get an individual purchase order because, I mean, that'd be like, you know, 500 or more of those a year to spend that same amount of money. It just makes it so much more inefficient. So we only spend what we need to though. It's just a blanket setup if, you know, if we spend, we might spend 50, 75, you know, but if, so but it's just, it makes it more efficient to purchase.
So most of the blankets that Phil's talking about are based on our previous spending history? So that's what they look at, and each department that has these, and you see a lot of them for chemicals and different like, things like that for the annual purchase amount, those are generally based on the annual purchasing for that item. So it, it's usually not too much less than that. A lot of times it's over and then you'll see it come back to you for approval of an increase of that, that blanket purchase.
Otherwise.
My question was, is if we're underestimating versus overestimating? Because the last council meeting that we had, there were 32 agenda items, it was over $3 million that we were asking to have council approve. Majority of those were blanket items. There's eight blanket items on here. I call this specifically because this is the most large amount that we're asking to have the public approve. If this is tailored specifically under the amount that we think we're going to be spending and it brought back to council, that to me would seem something that would be agreeable. But if it's something like we're writing a blank check close to what we had done previously in the last council meeting, that kind of, it transfers the necessary amount of power that we have here on council and our responsibilities over to the department. And the amount of money that we're talking about, citizens are concerned that we are giving these agenda items blanketed to the point where we don't mind coming here to council to talk about these issues. Are we underestimating, are we overestimating these compared to last year's fiscal?
It's similar to what the city manager said. We're basing it on like a three to five-year average because you can have a bad year, so you don't do it based on, do it based on a three to five-year, but you have to understand though, with our 1936 purchasing limit of $2,000, if you, if you took the 100, every 2,000 I spent, I'd have to come here 50 times. And, and there's no option to not buy them because the people need the meters, so I'm not buying anything I don't need. It just makes it more efficient to purchase it, but I'd, I'd have to bring the same dollar amount in front of you 50 times if we didn't get a blanket. Or if we did a reduced blanket of 50, it could be two or three different times that, you know, if, if I, if I've set it up for 50, you know, on three, on a three to five year average, I've been spending 100. I mean, it's 100% chance that I'm going to be come bringing that back in front of you as well. So it's just, it's an efficient way, in my opinion, of doing it without, you know, because there's not an option of not spending it. I'm not buying anything that does not need to go into the system.
That's why I'm like, you know, we don't mind having it come through two or three times here in front of council.
Yeah, I, I think it, I think what, what Phil's looking at is not, not that it's an issue for council, but if.
Staff.
If they're trying to efficiently operate the department, it doesn't, it doesn't make them efficient if they run out of meters two weeks before a council meeting or if we have three weeks to wait to do that.
Now we're doing an emergency purchase or.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I move for the acceptance of consent agenda number 13. I second that.
It's been moved in second, I'm sorry. Any more discussion? Here ain't no more discussion. Call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mayor Proton Balls?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache is absent. Councilmember Flores?
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have seven yes and one no, so your motion is approved. That takes us to item number 16. Approve a purchase with Rock Products for $200,000 for fiscal year 2022 and pending budget approval for fiscal year 2023 for concrete ready mix for the Streets Division. That was Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Okay, thank you. I guess you can actually kind of put those two together, 16 and 17, and as I read those, I believe they were like 50 cent difference. I'm wondering, are there any other things taken into consideration when choosing the persons or the, for particular, like for the Rock, Rock Products and R&amp;R, they were like 50 cent difference? So is it anything that kind of up some or, you know, that was like just so close, so I was so interested in those. So I'll combine those two if I can.
Sure. So for any of our bids, purchasing ordinance, like I mentioned before, we're guided by the ordinances that require us to take the lowest bid. There is an exception for in-city businesses? So if you're a city, a business located in the city and you're within, I think it's, is it 5%?
It's three or five.
5%, I think we increased it. Then, then you would get the bid if you agreed to match that lowest price. That's the biggest thing in there. Now, there are other bids that we get that are for engineering services or other specialized things where they could take into account where maybe they've had a bad experience working with a company or something like that, where they, they didn't deliver on time or something like that, that, that could be considered and considered, but we would probably advise council, you know, those, there were reasons like that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you, you'll see on a lot of these, sometimes we don't have a lot of bidders, but sometimes if it's particularly, I'm thinking of the chemicals that we purchase at water treatment and wastewater, they're going to be really similar because they're, they're getting them from the, the sec, the, the primary supplier and redistributing them too. So it just depends on what they, what they'll add on to that amount.
Got a comment. I'd like to thank you for all the streets that's getting fixed up. A lot of people complaining, but they getting fixed. So I'd rather hear the complaints that they getting fixed. I mean, because when I first come to city council, people complained all the time, and now they complaining the same amount because they didn't spit, so keep on doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Councilman.
And I'd like to make a motion if we approve 16 and 17.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Mayor, I think for the record, we should announce that 17 for the public, for the sake of the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item number 17 is with the same vendor, Rock Products, for $300,000 for fiscal year 2022 and 2023 for concrete ready mix, but it's for. year 2022 and 2023 for concrete ready mix, but it's for the maintenance and service.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. You keep me on my toes. Thank you so much. It's been moved in second. Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
That takes us to item number twenty. Approve the blanket purchase orders to various vendors for parts and supplies and services for the wastewater treatment and remote facilities division. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
My question has been answered in regards to that with the previous information, so, that's no longer an issue for me.
So, Mr. Ball, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Ball.
I move for the acceptance of consent agenda. I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Hearing no more discussion? Hearing none, let's call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next order of business is board commission committee reports.
Do we have any council person who attended any board or commission through the city that would like to report on anything at this time?
I had a question real quick. With the Human Rights Council, has there been any improvement or progression on the ordinance to have LGBTQ folks covered under the ordinance that was originally brought up under that committee?
I can't answer that, so have it. Madam Clerk, where do we go?
Well, I believe that committee was still just looking at the legislative changes. We were monitoring that.
Well, that happened a couple months ago, but has there been any progression into the monitoring of that? And I know that Councilwoman Bench...
They have done some movement, but there's continuously, and also, our attorney was, was keeping us abreast of everything that was going on, if there were any movement, any changes, but I can say as far as I know, Lansing and Marchand are just moving, and remember, they're on vacation right now, so nobody moving anywhere right now.
There haven't, there haven't been any changes since the last update, I think.
Okay.
Councilwoman Bench mentioned that, but I, I will mention that at the last meeting, we had a, as that, with that committee, we did meet with, and...
Scott Ellis.
Scott Ellis from, is it Great Lakes Pride now?
Yeah.
Yes, formerly Perception.
Yes. We did, we did meet with him, and I think we kind of updated the organization on where we were as well.
And, and so it's just sitting there until there's move, movement from the legislative state or federal branch, correct?
Not necessarily just the legislature. We're also tracking a case that came out of the Court of Claims that if it's currently going through the appeal process, and it looks like it's going to bypass the Court of Appeals and go straight to the Michigan Supreme Court, and that decision could have an impact that would effectively, in the same way the Supreme Court did last year, read into our current State Civil Rights Act to allow for protections for sexual orientation or gender identity. So, we're tracking that case as well.
And when, when did that materialize? Was it after the April update that we had?
I believe the case, it would have been part of our discussion at that time.
Back in April? Okay, thank you.
Any more? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
We are now at appointment of board and commission members. We do have one tonight, and it's a council appointment of the city manager's designee of Fire Chief Thomas Rains to the Saginaw County 911 Communication Center Authority for an indefinite term.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and doubly supported. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, let's call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
We are now at ordinance introduction. Our first one is an ordinance to amend Chapter 94, nuisance, health, and safety of Title Nine General Regulations by adding sections 94.100 purpose, 94.101 definitions, 94.102 pro, prohibit, prohibition, 94.103 violation and enforcement.
I need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Four seconds.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Under our ordinance, this will be laid over with the chapter provisions, but we got to vote, right?
A vote first.
Okay, let's do a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thighs have it, Madam Clerk.
Our second ordinance tonight is to amend Chapter 72 Parking Regulations of Title Seven Traffic Regulations by amending section 72.99 penalty.
I need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion? Hearing no discussions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Under our ordinances will be laid over under our charter provision.
Our third ordinance tonight is to amend Chapter 12 Boards and Commissions of Title One, by adding section 12.50 Saginaw Water System Advisory Council.
I need a, I need a motion to introduce, I'm sorry.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This will be laid over under our charter provision. Madam Clerk.
We have one more. To amend Chapter 132 Drug and Alcohol Offenses of Title 13 General Offenses by amending section 132.21 definitions and section 132.22 Possession, Manufacturing, and Sale Prohibited Exceptions.
I need a motion to introduce.
Flores, supports.
It's been moved.
Moved by Flores.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes. So, I can be correct? The items to change or be taken out are the ones with the lines through them are correct.
The language to be added would be highlighted in red, and the language to be removed would have a strike through going through them, correct?
I don't have any read, but, okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Flores?
Aye.
Councilmember Copeland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Bench?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Balls?
Aye.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yes.
Ossash is absent. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have seven yes and one no. Motion is approved.
This will also be laid over under charter provisions. Madam Clerk.
We are now at ordinance consideration and adoption. We do have one tonight. It's to amend the official city map to rezone the newly split lot to be located at 3111 Sheridan Avenue from our one single-family residential to B2 general business.
I need, I need a motion to adopt.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at resolutions. Our first one is authorizing the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Agreement for the development and construction of the Saginaw Riverfront Trail, Iron Bell Trail through Wicks Park.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Four seconds.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution is establishing a study committee to research the creation of the Bean Bunny Green Elevator into a single entity local historic district.
I need a motion to adopt.
Flores moves.
I need a second. I need a second. I need a second. I need a second, so...
No second. Motion is denied. Our third resolution is establishing a study committee to research the creation of the Behringer Building Local Historic District.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Four seconds.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, you are now at miscellaneous business.
Do we have any miscellaneous business?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know from the city manager or whomever, I guess this is the place I could say it, oh, some sort of update on OJibway Island now that they have the cameras there, would, you know, will we discuss, bring something to the council for us to vote on in regards to how we're going to move forward? I am one of the persons that went out and met city staff and, you know, was explained certain things, and, and also, by the way, maybe Wicks Park too, because I went out there with city staff, and, you know, since we are trying to do different things with those two particular parks, so just wondering when we're gonna, that's going to be brought to city council.
Well, council did vote at the last meeting on OJibway Island, so that plan, I believe, that, that Mr. Carwatt showed you, that's what we're proceeding with, the parking area at the front. I, I actually meant to talk to Phil, but I assume that the items have been ordered. A lot of the work we're doing in-house, we have a lot of the items that were in, what we discussed with the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, so we'll be proceeding with that as approved at the last meeting. The Wicks Park is in the design phase, I believe, now with what's approved this evening, and I, I believe we'll probably be proceeding with, I don't know what option it was, but it is mentioned in what you approved this evening as well.
Now, my understanding, maybe, please correct me. I stand to be corrected, but I thought the approval from council last meeting was the money, not necessarily what was going to be done at OJibway Island.
The resolution that was passed was giving the city manager the authority to proceed with that plan.
Okay.
Yes, along with the funding of, I think, up to $11,000.
So, can I ask this? I'd like to make a motion that we have an update, even though we got a partial today on Wicks Park, that we get, uh, just a quick update, maybe in the next two meetings, and we actually have the seed program come in along with Rick. And hopefully, y'all got some diagrams. I'm bragging on you now. Do they come and, and we can actually see it, or we do another tour back out to the park? Because they've done some amazing stuff out there.
Yep, yeah, we can set that up, a tour, and, and I know that, that they'll probably work with Phil Carwatt if they haven't already been doing that, so we'll make sure that either, either way, we'll get you something, written update, or if you want to go, want us to set something else where you can go out there again and see how that they're going to proceed with those plans. We can coordinate that.
I don't, I don't know if she was talking about for us to go see. I think she wants to bring it in to see on the screen so we can show the citizens the plan that we picking for Wicks Park. And I know, uh, Ms. Melcony wanted to know if we were still keeping that, the iron bill, and we are keeping that, so I'm sure she would like to see that in the drawing.
Yep, yeah, we can do, we can bring an update back, but I know there are some council members who'd like to go out and see those things too, so either way, we, we can do both. The Iron Bell Trail isn't, isn't our choice, that's state designated, so the Iron Bell Trail do, does go through there. Along the, the rest of the riverfront, but, yeah, we can do an update like that.
Thank you.
Do I need to put that in form of a motion? Thank you, because I would have had to, I would have had to switch chairs, put Mayor Pro Tem on that one. Thank you. Any other?
I had a two for consideration for staff to amend current chapters and sections for water charges for fifty, Chapter 52, Section 35, that no free water service be, that there be an exemption for those who meet the poverty standards that are laid out federally, and then also for, uh, Chapter 52, Section 41, for a late penalty of 10% be amended to lay charge of 1%. Up for consideration for the next council meeting.
Do we need a motion?
I need the motion already.
No, no, I'm asking. We didn't need one.
No.
We need a support.
Would you like a motion on that, Amy?
I think there needs to be.
Yeah, there's got to be council direction on that. He's asking about amending an ordinance, so we do need the full council to give that direction.
No problem, no problem. No, no problem, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, just explaining it.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Yes, ma'am.
My question is...
Well, who, who got the, who seconded first for a question?
Mr. Williams seconded.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Council William seconded, I'm sorry. Ms. Silva, Councilwoman Silva.
What I wanted to know is this is for, for discussion or to amend?
This is up for consideration for...
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed to understand.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I need a roll call, nobody opposed. No opposed.
Michael, will you email that to me, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm looking, because I'm...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn. Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Everybody have a good week.